Good morning and welcome to the City Planning Commission Remote Public Meeting. Ryan Singer, our Senior Director of Land Use and Commission Operations, will now outline general information about the remote public meeting and how to participate.
Verbal testimony may be provided online or by calling in on your telephone. If you wish to speak, you must register through the NYC Engage portal. If you wish to access the hearing, please register through the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage portal. A link to join the hearing is on the landing page after you register. Please do not close the landing page without first clicking on the link. If you're accessing the hearing via phone and you wish to speak, you must first register with the dial and participant hotline at the numbers listed on the screen. If one of the numbers is busy, please try again or try another one. The meeting ID is 6182377396. Press pound to skip the participation ID. The password is the numeral one. The phone number is also posted on the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage portal. Please note that no matter how you're accessing the meeting, you must register if you want to speak. Those accessing the meeting online will have the option to turn on their cameras while giving testimony. When it is your turn to speak, you'll be notified and promoted to a panelist. This will allow you to unmute your microphone and grant you the ability to turn on your camera. Please listen closely for your name to be called. There will be a short period where it will appear that you're no longer in the meeting. Don't be alarmed, you should rejoin the meeting as a panelist. If you're accessing the hearing via phone, your name will be called from the list of registered speakers. Once your name has been called, you will be given the temporary ability to unmute yourself. You do this by pressing star six to unmute your phone. For those listening to the hearing through the online live stream who have not yet registered to speak, but decided they wish to do so during the hearing, they must first register to speak through the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage portal. It's not possible to testify through the online live stream without first having registered. For those accessing the hearing via phone who have not registered to speak, you also must first register to speak through the dial and participant hotline I described a moment ago. Speakers are limited to three minutes of testimony. There are a few exceptions to the three-minute time limit. Elected officials are accorded the courtesy of jumping into the front of the queue and are not limited to three minutes. If consecutive translation services are being used, the time will be extended to five minutes. And if an applicant team with three or more speakers wishes to make a team presentation, the team will generally be allowed a total of 10 minutes. The Chair will announce when the time limit is reached. Please be mindful of potential background noise during your testimony. Make sure that if you're watching the proceedings via live stream, the live stream is muted when you begin your testimony, otherwise you will hear an echo. If you wish to submit written testimony, it should be submitted to the Department of City Planning. Mail-in and email addresses can be found on our website, planning.nyc.gov. And please note that the remote public hearing is being recorded.
Mr. Secretary, please begin the meeting.
Yes, and thank you, Chair Lamont. Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, all. This is a City Planning Commission public meeting held remotely through the NYC Engage portal. Today is Wednesday, December 1st, 2021. I will now call the roll. Chair Lamont.
Here.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Here.
Commissioner Bernie.
Here.
Commissioner Capelli.
Here.
Commissioner Cerulo.
Here.
Commissioner Dweck.
Here.
Commissioner Edie.
Here.
Commissioner Levin.
Here.
Commissioner Marine.
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Here.
Commissioner Rampaschad.
Here.
A quorum is present. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the public meeting of Wednesday, November 17th, 2021.
On the minutes, can I get, I would make a motion to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The minutes are approved.
The next item is scheduling. Calendar numbers one through six. We have resolutions for adoption scheduling Wednesday, December 15th, 2021, for remote public hearing to be held through the NYC Engage portal.
On the resolution, I make a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay. Any opposed?
Aye.
We're all in favor.
Aye.
Okay, the resolution is up. Okay.
The next part of the calendar is the reports section on page 10. Reports Borough Brooklyn, calendar numbers seven and eight. CD1, calendar number seven, C210166ZMK. Calendar number eight, N210167ZRK. In a matter of applications for zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning 79 Key Street rezoning. For favorable reports on calendar numbers seven and eight. Chair Lamont.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cerulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marine.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampaschad.
Yes.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers seven and eight. Borough Brooklyn, calendar numbers nine and 10, CD1, calendar number nine, Calendar number 10, N210273ZRK. In a matter of applications for a special permit and zoning text amendment concerning One Wife Avenue. For favorable reports on calendar numbers nine and 10. Chair Lamont.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cerulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marine.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampaschad.
Yes.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers nine and 10. Commissioners, calendar number 11 has been laid over. Borough of Queens, calendar numbers 12 and 13. CD1, calendar number 12. Calendar number 13, N210201ZRQ. In a matter of applications for zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning 31st Street and Hoyt Avenue rezoning. For favorable reports on calendar numbers 12 and 13. Chair Lamont.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cerulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yeah, for the reasons I've expressed at future, at our follow-up discussions on this, I fully agree that this area is appropriate for an upzoning and to include mandatory inclusionary housing. But I do think that the proposed zoning here goes too far and is out of balance with the scale of the neighborhood. So I'm going to vote no on this one.
Commissioner Marine.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampaschad.
Recused.
Commissioner Rampaschad is recused. Thank you, Commissioner Rampaschad. Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers 12 and 13. Calendar number 14 and 15 Borough of Queens, CD4. Calendar number 14, C210041ZMQ. Calendar number 15, N210042ZRQ. In a matter of applications for zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning 45-20, 83rd Street rezoning. For favorable reports on calendar numbers 14 and 15. Chair Lamont.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cerulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marine.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampaschad.
Yes.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers 14 and 15. Calendar number 16 Borough of Queens, CD12. In a matter of a notice of intent to acquire office space concerning the Law Department. For a favorable report on calendar number 16. Chair Lamont.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cerulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marine. Commissioner Marine.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Marine. Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampaschad.
Yes.
A favorable report has been adopted on calendar number 16. Borough of Manhattan, calendar numbers 17 and 18. CD5. Calendar number 17, C210453ZSM. Calendar number 18, C210454ZSM. In a matter of applications for the grant of special permits concerning the 415 Madison Avenue. For favorable report on calendars numbers 17 and 18. Chair Lamont.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cerulo.
Recused.
Commissioner Cerulo is recused. Thank you, Commissioner Cerulo. Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marine.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampaschad.
Yes.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers 17 and 18. Borough of Staten Island, calendar numbers 19 through 23. Calendar number 19, N220052RCR. Calendar number 20, N220048RCR. Calendar number 21, N220084RCR. Calendar number 22, M220130RCR. Calendar number 23, M210372RCR. In a matter of applications for the grant of certifications for adoption on calendar numbers 19 through 23. Chair Lamont.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cerulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marine.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampaschad.
Yes.
Calendar numbers 19 through 23 have been adopted. Borough of Staten Island, calendar numbers 24 and 25. CD2. Calendar number 24. Calendar number 25, N210310ZAR. In a matter of applications for the grant of authorizations concerning 77 and 85 Circle Road. For adoption on calendar numbers 24 and 25. Chair Lamont.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cerulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marine.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampaschad.
Yes.
Calendar numbers 24 and 25 have been adopted. Supplemental calendar, our last voting item for this morning Commissioners. Borough of Manhattan, supplemental calendar number one. CD5. In the matter of an application for the grant of an authorization concerning the Sedesco 41 West 57th Street. For adoption on supplemental calendar number one. Chair Lamont.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cerulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marine.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampaschad.
Yes.
Supplemental calendar number one has been adopted. Thank you, Commissioners. The next part of the calendar is the public hearing section on page 20. Borough of Brooklyn, calendar numbers 26 and 27. CD15, calendar number 26. Calendar number 27, N200328ZRK. A public hearing in a matter of applications for zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning 2892 Nostrand Avenue rezoning.
Thank you. We will have a 10-minute presentation and then we will have public testimony. And again, we ask that those testifying limit their remarks to three minutes, after which they will be muted. Please also just let me note that while we welcome the opportunity to hear your comments, we ask that courtesy and decorum be observed at all times during your testimony. Thank you. The team can begin.
Richard Lobell, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Thank you. So I will begin the presentation for 2892 Nostrand Avenue. I will be followed by Victor Falletti, the project architect, who will discuss some of the architectural aspects of the proposal. And finally, Kevin Williams from Equity Environmental will discuss some of the environmental aspects, including data on traffic and parking. So you see before you the 2892 Nostrand Avenue rezoning. This rezoning would result, next slide, in a nine-story building with roughly 55 units, of which 14 would be affordable. The project summary, as included here, discusses both actions, the first being the rezoning, which would rezone roughly seven of the lots within the zoning district boundary, inclusive of the development site to an R7A-C24, with two lots maintaining merely an R7A designation, and five of the lots to an R6B-C24. This is being rezoned from the existing R32. Of course, this would also be accompanied by a zoning text amendment to Appendix F to allow for mandatory inclusionary housing. Next slide. The next slide includes the statistics with regards to the proposed development. This would take an underdeveloped, one-story former plumbing supply store and turn it into a nine-story residential building. The floor area would be roughly 4.59, with 43,000 square feet roughly for residential use, 3,700 for commercial use, and then 3,500 for community facility use. The building would rise to a total height of nine stories with a base height of seven stories and then a setback. There would be 56 parking spaces, which we can discuss in more detail. And the number of units would be 55 dwelling units, of which 14 would be permanently affordable. Next slide. So this is just kind of an eagle-eyed view of the site location. We're located south of King's Highway along Nostrand. And I think if we can fast-forward two slides, you can see the zoning map, which has the existing R32, and then the tax map, which better describes the zoning. The R7A without the commercial overlay includes two residential buildings, a four-story and seven-story residential, both noncompliant with the existing R32 regulations, one grandfathered and one pursuant to a BSA variance. The remaining would be R7A-C24, inclusive of the site, with five lots being rezoned to R6B-C24 that are close to the PFC Norton Park, so as to not cause deleterious shadows. Next slide. So I think the land use map really sets forth the justification for the rezoning. You can see that Nostrand Avenue here is a 100-foot wide street. On prior rezonings before the commission over the last three to four years, rezonings along streets as narrow as 70 feet have produced in Brooklyn R7A rezonings. This is not that. This is a rezoning with 100-foot wide street. It is a major quarter running nine miles within Brooklyn. It is within 300 feet of an R7A district, so you see along King's Highway, as was rezoned in the 2006 Homecrest rezoning. Additionally, this is not merely a matter of a wide street. It is also a, there is excellent transportation access to the site, including six bus lines within 300 feet of the site and three along Nostrand. You can see there's a much, a lot of retail activity. The Marine Park is located within a half mile of the site. This is really, as far as services and retail, this is well-suited for a rezoning of this nature. Next slide. So we merely include site photos, including the seven-story building two lots away, which would be included in the rezoning. It's close to a 3FAR. This would be made conforming and complying, more importantly, with regards to the proposed rezoning. I'd ask that you page through the remainder of the photos and come to the plans, the project plans, where Mr. Falletti will briefly touch base on the proposed development. Victor?
Okay, first slide shows our proposed rendering of the project. It's for a nine-story mixed-use building with a seven-story portion fronting right onto the street. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. This is a site plan showing the portions of the building that would be nine stories and the portion fronting onto the street that would only be seven stories. And a small eight-story portion in the rear and with a large outdoor courtyard recreation space adjacent to the residential properties to the rear. Next slide. We have proposed underground parking. It is a stacked parking facility that would be fully attended to provide parking for 56 off-street parking spaces. Next slide. The building, as I said, is mixed-use, commercial on the first floor, community facility on the second floor, and residential there above. This is the ground floor plan, showing the retail space, residential lobby, and ramp down to the cellar off-street parking. Next slide. Community facility on the second floor with some residential apartments to the rear. Next slide. Typical floor plans from three through seven showing residential apartments. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. This is a section that shows a lot of information that is applicable here, showing that we have maintained as much of a rear yard as possible to keep the separation from the residential district to the rear, residential parking in the cellar, and the description of the uses throughout. I'll give the rest of my time to the next presenter.
Well, Kevin Williams from Equity Environmental. If you could reverse back to slide seven, just so we have a frame of reference. So I'd like to touch on a few matters. The environmental assessment received a negative declaration, but I'd like to focus specifically on just some of the characteristics and citing considerations related to the rezoning. First of all, as Rich noted, Mr. Lobell noted, Nostrand Avenue is a 100-foot wide street in this section, similar to Ocean Boulevard, several blocks away, which is an R7A, has very similar transit connections and accessibility to both rail and select bus service. In terms of, one of the considerations in determining the utilization of parking and parking demand related to the facility is sort of commuting patterns and car ownership. So in this area, according to the 2019 ACS, 70% of the residents in the two-block areas adjacent or containing the site, what is 70%. So the 30% of the residents in the area do not own a car. 35% use public transportation with an approximate 50/50 split between bus and subway. 48% drive, 41% of those drive alone, 7% carpool, and 5% work from home. And I would note, as most members of the City Planning Commission and professionals here note, a lot of people working from home. And I expect, you know, once, you know, we, hopefully we get our hands around COVID, that it's likely that will people will return to work. But the fact is that working from home is a significant change in the nature of commuting patterns and is something that should be considered in this action and just as a context in other rezonings. Now, in terms of parking demand considerations, you know, you have a very transit-supportive area. There are two select bus services routes. There are literally bus routes that connect to the entire city. Buses that connect to, you know, both of the nearby subway lines connecting to the BQ at the King's Highway Station and the M&amp;J Station that connect to the Q. Now granted, those are about a 20-minute walk. They're also, this area highly utilizes both subway and bus. So that is a part of the characteristics that we're seeing here. So the major note and the takeaway, and I, in terms of the traffic analysis, the, I understand residents are concerned about traffic in the area. You know, south of the site, you have, you know, a large car dealership that's present there that generates a lot of traffic. And actually, there are actions that occur before the Board of Standards and Appeals to supply considerable additional parking to that area. But I would also note, and one of the great benefits that's come out of the negotiations with the community board is that the applicant has agreed to provide one space plus one for every resident in the building, which is double the parking requirement. And what that does is you have land uses proposed by the applicant, local retail and small medical office, both under 4,000 square feet. Those are local serving uses that primarily pedestrian draws. The demand generated from the project, assuming 70% car ownership and not even factoring in affordable housing, you're going to have a reservoir of spaces. The applicant is also committed to having a managed parking operation, which creates a very unique benefit to the community in that the project itself sustains its parking demand. And in addition, there's a potential for reservoir spaces for additional people that need parking in the area. And by, and basically how that happens is approximately 48% of patrons in the area travel.
Time has expired. Sorry. Thank you. Now I will ask the Commission if they have any questions for you. Commissioner Ortiz.
Hi, thank you. A few questions. You ended up on, you know, the note speaking to parking demand. And, you know, I've noted this actually in our previous presentation, that, you know, we have seen such an increase in alternative modes of transportation. I mean, Brooklyn in particular, I think you have tons of city bikes. You have bike lanes, you know, that are being used and utilized. And people who are living at home in an urban environment like this are probably more likely to hop on their bike or walk than they are to take their car out and figure out a place to park it at the other end, right? So, you know, could you speak to how you're accommodating those needs within the building? I'm sort of more interested in that piece. And, you know, a number of developers have come before us and have increased the amount of bike storage, you know, recognizing that nearly everybody has a bike these days and they don't want to store it in their apartments. And so bike storage is really useful. And a family often has, you know, a bike for themselves and their kids. So, you know, could you speak to what you're doing on that front?
Well, I can let Victor discuss that, but I think we have 21 bike spaces provided in the building. And I completely agree with you about the notion of reinforcing alternative modes of transportation. You know, generally, when you supply more parking, you engender more parking utilization. And that's something from a planning perspective, you know, that doesn't necessarily, everybody doesn't need to be accommodated on their car. But we are trying to listen to the community board. But Victor, you can, you know, correct me if I'm wrong about the parking, the bike parking storage.
Sure. We've listed it in the cellar, adjacent to the vehicle parking. We have listed it as the minimum amount of 21 parking spaces for bicycles, but we've provided a large area along the stairwell near the elevators so that cyclists could use the entrance ramp into the building or the elevator into the lobby and have parking very close to the elevator in that area and have assigned spaces. And there would be certainly some reservoir spaces as well. And then go up the elevator to their apartment and not have to store their bicycles in their apartments.
I mean, I think, you know, if you're, if you're making the argument here that you need to provide more parking, we also need to accommodate much more bicycle parking, you know, even at a one-to-one ratio. They don't need a lot of space.
Nope.
You know, and I think that that's just an important accommodation for what we're seeing right now.
Sure.
We also just, we appreciate the comment. We can look at that. And also, you know, that just with regards to why we provided this amount of parking. The Land Use Committee of Community Board 15 heard us first on September 30th and then again on October 14th. Between those two dates, we reconfigured the parking area to increase from 24 automobile parking spaces to 56. And from that alone, they basically, with no other comments on the building, approved us unanimously at the Land Use Committee. So we're very happy to get that agreement.
I mean, we know who sits on community boards and what their interests are. I think that we're talking here about something that, you know, is perhaps a bit more holistic. You know, I think that we're talking here about something that, you know, is, is perhaps a bit more holistic. I, I appreciate that. Um, you know, there are fifteen spots, bike spots per one parking space. Um, you know, so I, I think um, we can achieve a balance that acknowledges what, you know, the market, um, and what, you know, what we're, we're needing to support um, at a citywide level as well.
We're happy to, to make that change.
Thank you. Um, any other questions from the commission? Okay, I see none. So we will now start uh, with questions from the public and follow our procedure of five speakers in opposition, followed by five speakers in support, going back and forth until the speaker list is exhausted. Okay, so the first speaker I note is Victor Shine. Are you in the room, Mr. Shine?
Hi, thank you for allowing me to speak. I've been in this neighborhood. I purchased a house in nineteen ninety-two. Uh, I have no problem with developments and the like. I think it's great for the city. I just think that it's a bit excessive to go up nine stories. Even in the R-7A that's around the corner, you can't even see it from that space on Nostrand. It is out of character with the neighborhood. Uh, there are a lot of schools and places of prayer, parks and the like. And I think that going all the way up to nine stories is a bit much. If it could be reduced to the seven stories that the rest of the neighborhood is, it won't become the first domino that makes the entire neighborhood grow out of proportion. And I'll cede the rest of my time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shine. Are there any questions for Mr. Shine? If not, the next speaker is Judy Weiss, to be followed by Yehuda Shuber.
There you go. Hello, do you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, I'm opposed to this. I mean, I recall the first meeting where somebody, I think he was a developer or whatever, um, when, in, in response to somebody saying that they will lose their light, he said, "That's very selfish of us to say that losing the lights is something that, you know, we should have a problem with." I'm opposed to a nine-story building because I know I'm on the next block on between, I back Nostrand Avenue, and there's between Quentin and P. And um, I know there's another developer waiting in the wings because there's a lot of commercial stores at the back that are being vacated one by one. Um, and I know that he's only waiting for this. And who knows, after, you know, nine-story, who knows, maybe he wants eleven-story. This is a, a domino effect that, and they're all going to be looking into my backyard. We have, um, this is, I understand Nostrand is a hundred-foot-wide, but all these um, streets backing onto Nostrand Avenue have to be taken into account of this behemoth going to be staring into our bedrooms and bathrooms. Um, when we've, you know, our houses are worth money, they're going to be worth a lot less, and my privacy will be ruined. Um, and I won't be able to sit in my backyard. Um, currently, right across the street from this proposed building is a development that went up maybe three years ago um, with many, many apartments, I don't know, twenty, thirty apartments. They're all vacant. We don't need more apartments. They need, the city needs to find a way to incentivize all the current vacant apartments on Nostrand and throughout the neighborhood um, and incentivize the, the current buildings to be used as rentals. We do not need more buildings. Now, I don't know what the um, the tax breaks that these people are getting and um, and if the rentals can be turned back into sales and what their ulterior motives are. All I know is, is we do not need more, more buildings. Um, and the stacking, parking, I don't believe it's going to end up working out. I've been to buildings that have these um, underground parking lots with the pillars of the building. It's impossible to maneuver the fender benders all the time, and people end up parking on the street anyway. Um, and the quality of life, this is a multi-use neighborhood. When we didn't move to Manhattan, we want to walk to Marine Park and not be overshadowed by massive buildings. Today, it's nine building, nine, nine stories, tomorrow will be eleven. Um, have to take into account, we're not Manhattan. We don't need more buildings. Um, and this is a David versus Goliath moment. I mean, we don't have the resources to fight these people, to fight the people.
Time.
We need the city to help us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, are there any questions for Ms. Weiss? Okay, seeing none. The next speaker is Yehuda Shuber, who's the Director of Communications for Assemblywoman Helen Weinstein.
Good morning, everybody. Uh, thank you for getting my name right. So that's, um, let me just begin by saying that the Assemblywoman is a strong proponent of affordable housing, and the fourteen units would be very much welcome uh, for the middle-class, you know, neighborhood that it's, it's trying to make home. Um, she just believes that we can't afford to bring in such a building and disrupt the character of this neighborhood as a nine-story, fifty-four, fifty-five unit building would. The building, as planned, would be six stories higher than the buildings currently occupying these lots and three stories higher than the majority of multi-level apartment buildings along Nostrand Avenue. The Assemblywoman also questions whether parking spaces at a premium compromise any affordability promised, which would lead to fourteen tenants possibly requiring street-side parking, which is not widely available. Uh, adding fifty-four units on an avenue already experiencing horrible levels of congestion would do no favor to the situation and would definitely pose a detrimental effect to the local residents who have been making this neighborhood home for decades. Uh, just as a postscript, while retail space is a quaint idea and foot traffic is a quaint idea, uh, the behemoth CVS had to just shut down their store just a block north of the site along Nostrand Avenue and King's Highway, which is a major transportation hub and which would lend to an amazing amount of foot traffic. But obviously, they saw fit not to have that store open as it did not pose a financial, um, uh, you know, the uh, situation for them, a positive financial situation. Uh, that's, that's the totality of my, my testimony. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Um, Commissioner Dweck.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Yehuda, what level of height would, would be acceptable to the council, to the Assemblywoman?
I think if we matched, there's another building on that block. We've had, um, I, I've been to CB fifteen um, meetings regarding, or sorry, CB eighteen meetings, I believe, regarding the building that's across the street. And they too wanted to go above and beyond the allowed, I think, four-story height that they were going to be granted. And we opposed to that because, just because it, you know, when you, when you walk down a block and you, you see that sort of cutout where it jumps up. So if it matched the current height, which I believe is six or seven stories on that block, I think, you know, with the affordability option and the promised parking spots, there would be um, a, a, more of a chance of, of us, you know, you know, wanting to promote the development.
Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Shuber. Uh, the next speaker is Shalom Lasker, to be followed by Gerald Frugter.
Hi, uh, thank you very much. Thank you, Chair, Co-Chair, and Commissioners. Um, I just want to make a few comments. I think a lot of them reflect some of the, the comments that we've heard so far, but I wanted to add one or two additional. Um, I, I personally don't have such a big issue with the parking and the traffic. Uh, I, I think traffic will manage to flow. Um, it's already congested as it is. So that's, that's not my main concern. I think my main concern is just the sheer size of the proposal. Um, a nine-story building would not be in scale with the rest of the neighborhood. And I, I do take issue with some of the images that were shown in, in the site plans. Uh, they, they tend to have taken those photos looking at the one existing uh, six- or seven-story grandfathered apartment building. And it makes it appear as if this new nine-story building would not be so out of place and such an eyesore. Um, I, I did in the earlier meeting just encourage people who are making decisions to potentially come and look at the neighborhood. The vast majority of the neighborhood is, is, you know, small, uh, you know, single-family, two-family homes. There are a few new buildings that have gone up on Nostrand, as people have mentioned. Those have typically been up to four stories. Um, Commissioner Dweck, I think, just asked what would be acceptable. Um, I was joining this panel, so I got cut off, but I think four stories is a more acceptable height and more in flow with the neighborhood. There was also a comment about King's Highway being nearby on the zoning map and showing that that's an R-seven. Uh, but King's Highway is, is, although it's probably just several hundred feet away in terms of physical distance, it's just in a totally different neighborhood. You know, you ride down King's Highway as, as a King's Highway. Once you've turned the corner to Nostrand, it's just a very different space. Uh, so there's, there might be some proximity there, but it, it just looks different. And I think the feedback that we've heard overwhelmingly from the community, again, this was voted down on the community board. Um, a few weeks ago, there was a meeting, I believe it was called a U-Lerp meeting, if I'm getting that right. Um, overwhelming opposition from the community. It's actually kind of brought the community together, which is interesting. Uh, but you, you know, the, the sense is just that we don't want to look like King's Highway. We don't want to look like Ocean Avenue, you know, that has a lot of these tall buildings. Um, I, I will comment that, you know, I also do like the idea of affordable housing. I think it's, it's nice. Uh, but as other people mentioned, there are, there's lots of space available in other buildings that have gone up. There's, they've been built for three years, they're still all vacant. Um, so it's, it's not like there isn't space, it's just a matter of finding out the right space. Also, to reflect on, you know, commercial use, there are a lot of stores in the neighborhood that have for rent and for sale signs. I think there's plenty of other space to look for it. Again, my, my feeling is nine stories is just too high, but four stories would be appropriate. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lasker. Are there any questions from the commission? Okay, thank you very much. Um, the next speaker will be Gerald Frugter, to be followed by Stephen Gray.
Uh, my name is Gerald Frugter. Uh, as um, an affected homeowner whose backyard abuts on the site, I oppose this project. We propose nine-story uh, building is out of character with the surrounding Marine Park, Madison, uh, residential communities. There are reasons why there are zoning regulations, and this project does not have, present any compelling reason for rezoning. In the existing charters, it states that rezoning requires a betterment of the community. Again, I don't see that being the case here. The proposed tower will either reduce or eliminate light exposure and privacy of many uh, homes in the vicinity, particularly those on East Twenty-Ninth Street, uh, backing the project. Uh, in addition, there is like one uh, park within uh, in the vicinity, um, which is the PFC Norton Playground, which is a hundred feet north of this proposed site. The lighting there, as it is, is, is not very great, and this project will definitely impact negatively and reduce the lighting to that park. The, um, as mentioned, this will worsen, exist, uh, the pre-existing rather severe traffic congestion, which uh, brings up, again, safety concerns. Uh, in particular, there, um, there are four schools on this block, two elementary schools, several hundred students. And there have been, this block has had a lot in its share of accidents and safety concerns regarding all the students, I think, should be uh, considered as well. In terms of parking, as mentioned, the parking in the neighborhood is already at, uh, very difficult, and this will make it worse. And I, I don't believe that the stacked parking solution is tenable. I think that the, this will lead to excessive costs. And in addition, it'd be a major inconvenience for the tenants to have to bring their cars in and out all day and await, await the attendant in terms of getting uh, their car out. So I do think uh, many of those residents in, in the building will end up parking in the street. And parking, as I said, is really uh, pretty bad news as it is. Um, so, um, that's about it. And again, I, I thank you for opportunities to speak. I will, I'd love to just add one thing. It was very difficult to get, to join the meeting. Uh, we got calls from friends, neighbors, they couldn't get in. The meeting was supposed to be, according to the calendar, um, the last city planning meeting was supposed to start at ten AM. This didn't start till eleven-thirty, and therefore, only people, I guess, such as myself, who are retired, even have the luck.
Thank you very much, Mr. Frugter. Um, are there any questions for Mr. Frugter from the commission? Okay, thank you. So the next speaker is Stephen Gray, to be followed by Jason Jackson.
Good afternoon. Um, my name's Stephen Gray. Been in the area, in the community for over thirty years, and I am for the building being built. I think it's going to create good affordable housing for people who have been normally priced out of this area. I think uh, someone mentioned CVS. I think, uh, you know, with fifty-four apartments being put in, I think that's going to be over a hundred individual people. I think CVS could have certainly benefited from it. I think the, the economic benefits to all the, all the businesses in the area will absolutely benefit, and maybe we can get rid of some of those for sale or for rent signs on, on the stores that are out there. I think they need a good dose of, uh, of economic benefit. People that will spend money in the area. Um, there's two hospitals that are within a four- or five-block walking radius. I think it'll attract people, nurses, young doctors, uh, to live in the area and then to have a walking commute to work instead of having to drive or even take a bike. I think this will absolutely add to the character there. I think it's going to increase uh, property values. You know, we heard people talking about people are going to be looking into my backyard. Well, you have existing businesses, you have existing buildings there, and that certainly hasn't been an issue. And if it has, you know, I think people would take uh, some kind of precautions, such as window blinds or shades or something like, to that effect. But I really think the ultimate benefit is to have people that can afford to live in the area. Families, young families. You know, the problem is, a lot of people that are nurses, they make decent money, but to buy a house, these houses are a million, million and a half dollars right now around the area. And people are talking about parking. How many of these houses have basement apartments? Whether legal or illegal, and they're renting them out, and there's, you know, six, eight, ten people living in that house. And unfortunately, this is not the eighties anymore, and six or eight people have cars. But there's a one-car or two-car garage or, or a carport. No one ever says anything about that. People taking up, you know, six or seven spots living from one private house. And the reality is, you know, this house, the, all the old buildings, they're, they're, they don't have the ADA compliance that people who are renting, people who have wheelchairs, people who have disabilities, they can't access. They have tremendous difficulty and access navigating through the building into their apartments that are old, that, that, that predate the ADA laws. You know, I think something like this would certainly benefit the people, would benefit the neighborhood, would, would stimulate business, stimulate the economy in the area, and would be, would be tremendous benefit. And I think, uh, not only should this building go up, I think other buildings should go up as well. There was, uh, some people voiced out of a concern. This would certainly benefit the area. That's what this, that's what this community needs. Businesses are dying, there's not enough people shopping there. How many?
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Your time's expired. Um, are there any questions from the commission? Okay, thank you for your time.
Can I be here?
Mr. Jason Jackson, next.
Thank you very much. Uh, good morning to everyone. Uh, I'm a renter in the neighborhood and have been so for the past thirty years. And I'd like to touch on a few issues first. Uh, one is that it's Nostrand Avenue. Uh, it's not Nostrand Place, street or court, and it has been a place for seven-plus-story buildings, uh, right from its very beginning at Emmons Avenue, all the way, uh, well past where this proposed building uh, is to be constructed. Uh, there are several structures that are in excess of seven stories. Uh, most notably is the three blocks north, you have the Yitzhak School. And five blocks south, you have the Lev Bayes Yakov, which is, uh, well in excess of seven stories. And I'm all in favor of those buildings, uh, because they provide quality education in our neighborhood. And I'm also in favor of this nine-story structure because it can, uh, provide quality housing in our neighborhood. Uh, to the point of the sun, uh, it rises east-west, not north-south. So the idea that there would be some shadow cast over that park that was referenced is absurd. And that park, if anyone is familiar with it, uh, looks like it's in the rainforest. It's covered, uh, with trees. It looks like a, a triple canopy. And, and, and like I said, the sun doesn't rise north to south, so the shade is not an issue. Um, what else? Sorry, bear with me. Uh, as to the character, right, uh, to the point. There are seven-plus-story structures from the beginning to end of this avenue, and there is a desperate need for housing in this area, despite what- and there is a desperate need for housing in this area, despite what some woman spoke of earlier. I rent there and know that affordable rental apartments are very limited. And I am in support of this building, and I'm in support of my neighborhood. Thank you, I yield my time.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Any questions for Mr. Jackson? Thank you again. The next speaker is Mitchell Fruchter, to be followed by Alice Lubatin.
I'll try to be brief. I'm, I'm the son of Daryl Fruchter. I, I live in, I live in the studio in the city. I know the neighborhood well. I, I could tell you, I attest, when everything, I agree with everything Shalom Lasker said. In terms of, basically, I sent in pictures, I, I hope that the commission has, has, has walked through the area. It's, it's quite apparent, just to point out some interesting things. It's the longest, as far as I know, it's the longest street in, in Brooklyn. It's the intersection of Marine Parkway and Madison Place, and that's part of the reason why the street is wide, wider there. As realized, right, it's Madison and Marine Park are the two neighborhoods. It's a special area, can be a special area, and just like was spoke about by Penn Station, if, if, you know, if thought could be looked at the area, I think the neighborhood would benefit, and that's, you know, that's, that's the idea behind zoning and rezoning. So please, we understand the financial, I go into details in terms of the CVS. We understand the financial issues dealing with online shopping and all that. But if you just walk around the area, is exactly what Mr. Lasker said. So that's it. I just add, obviously, we don't have six to seven spots per space, and it is south, not north of, of the CV, of the, the Whittle, Plaza Whittle space. So just, please, just look around the area, look at the comments that the community has sent, because that is the situation. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fruchter. Any questions from the commission? Okay, I don't see any, so thank you. The next speaker is Alice Lubatin, to be followed by Nancy Willamowski.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate this time to address you. I am a homeowner on Marine Parkway, around the corner from the site in question. I was born and raised in Marine Park. I'm a graduate of PS 207, Marine Park Junior High School, and James Madison High School. I ended up, when I got married and had a family, we ended up buying a house on Marine Parkway. So I can tell you I am a lifer here. What's beautiful about this neighborhood is the very fact that it is a low-density and a middle-class neighborhood. Many people fled New York City to the suburbs. There were those of us who wanted to be able to stay in New York City, in Brooklyn, in a residential neighborhood. That is what we love about this. I don't think there's anything wrong. And having sat through your entire special session just before, talking about increased density and 19 million square feet around the New Jersey Transit and the, the train, the Moynihan Train Station. And that's what makes the beauty of New York, is that we have parts of New York City that should be extremely dense, that have huge commercial possibilities, and that see millions of people come in every day. And then there's also the beauty of Brooklyn and Queens and Staten Island and the Bronx, the outer boroughs. And especially us, we're very close to the Atlantic Ocean. I mean, what a beautiful thing it is. We really have a wonderful neighborhood. There's nothing wrong with having a middle class that loves New York City, wants to stay in New York City, and, and wants to preserve this low density. About 10 years ago, I testified before the BSA about that beige apartment building that is nearby, the four-story. They wanted to create the developers an eight-story. I came to the BSA in person, and I testified. And at the time, they said to the developers, please go back to the drawing board, and please take it down to a height that is reasonable for the neighborhood. And so it went from an eight-story proposed building to a four-story building. And I think that that is what has to happen here. Honestly, we don't need more medical offices. If you come and walk around the neighborhood, you have a plethora of medical offices. I don't think that the idea of stacked parking can work at all. I will also draw the commission's attention to the fact that there is an underground stream that runs underneath Nostrand Avenue. If you know Dutch, on strand, which is the original of Nostrand, means our shore, our beach. So there is a problem of water that flows beneath. If the developers are going to dig way down to do the stacked parking, they are going to have a major issue. Also, one of the gentlemen.
Thank you, Ms. Lubatin, your time expired. Are there any questions from the commission?
So I'll note that we're now getting near the end of this public hearing. And if you haven't registered yet to speak, but you decided that you'd like to, now is the time to do so. Again, you can find instructions on how to register, whether online or via phone, at www.nyc.gov/nycengage. The next speaker is Nancy Will, Willamowski, to be followed by Joyce Fruchter.
Nancy does not appear to be in the room.
So then we move on to Joyce Fruchter, to be followed by Josh Melman.
Fruchter should be able to speak. We can reach out if we, and see if we can get troubleshoot for Ms. Fruchter if we want to move on.
Why don't we just move on to Josh Melman, who's the last speaker that's signed up at this time?
Okay, my name is Josh Melman. I'm the chairman of the Flapish Jewish Community Coalition, known as the FJCC. We represent many synagogues, schools, and businesses in the community, many thousands of residents. We're made up of volunteer group that's made up of business people and homeowners in the neighborhood. We're very concerned, and we oppose the approval of this new construction. We think it is certainly out of character with the neighborhood. I know someone earlier said, down on Emmons Avenue, they have big buildings, and they named the school, obviously a school down on Emmons Avenue, there's no relationship to this, neither do the buildings on King's Highway. This is, as some of these speakers earlier said, this is a separate area, a residential primary area, surrounded by residential with this one commercial strip running through it. There is a plethora of vacant apartments, vacant storefronts, vacant community facilities in the area. There is no need for any additional of any of the above. The parking is totally inadequate. Stacked parking doesn't even work in the city, let alone in a residential building in, in Brooklyn. It's, it's just not going to work, and certainly not sufficient to cover the visitors nor the residents. I just want to explain the character of this building, of this neighborhood. There are four schools, two on this block, with over 30 teachers that come every morning, and you could speak to the principals and the schools, and I, I suggest you visit. They are circling around all the time for parking. It's impossible to park in the neighborhood as is. They come late to school. Parents come to pick up their kids, there's double parking all day long in this, on this block. This block surrounding it, on East 31st Street, and the other side on East 29th Street, are the longest residential blocks in Brooklyn, I believe maybe even in New York, Tarry City. Most of the people living in these homes, one- and two-family homes, have two cars. Or they have a minivan, because there are large families on this block. There's over 100 children right around the corner on East 29th Street and also on East 31st Street. It's a very heavy residential block. There is nowhere to park, there's nowhere to play then on the sidewalk in a small park. And there definitely will be a shadow from a nine-story building on East 29th Street. The sun rises in the east, it still does. I know the other person mentioned the direction of the sun. The direct sun, we live in the normal hemisphere, the sun comes up towards the south. From the east goes in the south, there will be a tremendous shadow on the entire park all the time. There's one park for hundreds and hundreds of children, and all the schools, the four schools in the area, will play in that park. There will be a shadow all day long, there's no question about it. The bill, the building, proposed building is right down the block, right next door to the park. There's four synagogues, one large one on the corner.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Melman. Now we'll take questions for Mr. Melman from the commission, Commissioner Dweck.
Thank you. Mr. Melman, is there a height that would be acceptable to the community? And I mentioned earlier, a reduced height, is there a height that, that you feel the consensus would be acceptable to?
Yeah, this is out of character. What would be acceptable is what is currently on the, on that block, which is four stories, nothing more than that. Anything more than that would be totally out of character, would cause an increased congestion, parking nightmare. We have vacant buildings all over the place, we don't need another building just sitting there. I don't know what kind of incentives they're getting, but, you know, I wish them the best in business-wise, but there's not a reason to impose it on this very heavy residential area of East 29th, East 31st. It's just impossible for this area. There's a synagogue, by the way, right next door, and there's people, it's impossible to park there, they're complaining all the time.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Other questions?
Are there any further questions? Then I thank you, Mr. Melman. And now we'll check back to see whether or not Joyce Fruchter is available to speak, or whether Nancy Will, Willamowski has returned to the room.
Well, it looks like Ms. Willamowski is here. You should be able to unmute your microphone.
Okay, thanks a lot. I, I don't know, I don't know how I got lost, because I listened to the whole meeting from the beginning. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I, I don't want to repeat things that have been mentioned. I've been living in this neighborhood for over 40 years, and I have used many of the bus lines that were described as, as reasons that justify this building of this nature, how busy it is, and how much, how much traffic this, there is, and how many bus lines there are. And I can tell you that it's quite the opposite. King's Highway and Nostrand, over the last, I would say 10 years, has been noted as one of the most deadly intersections in the city. And as a result, numerous things were attempted to try to improve traffic, and they have had the absolutely opposite effect. I know many people, including myself, who now drive down the streets on the side of Nostrand, because Nostrand is absolutely not usable. You have all of those double, double-decker buses, you have, and the idea that you're going to have 50 people coming down the street and trying to, to obstruct traffic so that they could get into their parking lot, is just so untenable for, for this block, that it, it just defies consideration. It just, it just makes no sense at all. Now, I'm also a bike rider, and I can tell you that there is no bike path on Nostrand Avenue, nor can there be, because there aren't even room for the cars. There's a bus lane, and then they try to make a turning lane onto King's Highway. Of course, they disturbed all the parking spaces of the store owners, which hurts them every, every day and every minute of every day. And so the idea of, of talking about how great it's going to be to add another bunch of bike riders and, and even, even other types of, of ways of getting around, is just completely unrealistic and completely destroys the nature of this block. This block has a number of, of one, one, one and two-family houses. I walk by all the time. I, I, I walk on this block to the, to the park, I have grandchildren. There's synagogue, they have, they have activities for them. And I can tell you that right on the corner of Avenue P and Nostrand, you will see what happens when you have a store that, that's closed, that has now been closed for upward of two years, and there is so much garbage collecting in front of, in front of it. The idea that you're, that you think that you're going to have, have new stores in conjunction with this, with this building, is just completely unrealistic and.
Thank you, Ms. Willamowski. Are there any questions for Ms. Willamowski? If not, I'll, I'll just ask, Ryan, is Joyce Fruchter in the, the room and available?
We believe so. We've reached out to her and have worked to get her on.
Hi, this is not Joyce, this is actually Amber Cartalian with Equity Environmental. I was having some trouble, I don't know why it wasn't.
We don't have you signed up, hold on.
Hello?
Hi, there we go.
Ah, finally, thank you so much.
Sure.
Okay, Joyce Fruchter. A number of speakers spoke very well, and I agree with what they said about having, about opposing the, the nine-story monstrosity that is being proposed. I, I really do feel that I live right behind where this is proposed, and I do feel it would be tremendously out of character with the neighborhood. It is really mostly outside forces that are pushing this as a community. I don't think many people in the community really are for this. We are basically one- and two-family homes. It's a very private place, like Alice pointed out. And behind me, they've already, they've already put up a four-story building, which does diminish my light and privacy, there is no question about it. But anything taller than that would be absolutely ridiculous. I mean, obviously, I would be happier not to have that, but I understand that something is probably going to be built there. But the fact that the parking, you've heard all this before, the parking here is already horrendous. Every day, multiple times on my block, people complain that they are being blocked because somebody just double parks and they can't get into their driveways. There's tremendous congestion here, the floor, the sewer lines are overburdened and will be further overburdened. And again, that light, even in their environmental proposal, it shows that the light to the park will be blocked for a number of hours. So there is so many reasons that trying to build something like this is just so out of character that and I, I have to agree also about the safety issue. There have been many, many accidents up the block, including somebody on the block who was hospitalized for quite a while. It's, it's dangerous, more people, more congestion. I'm repeating myself, so I will get off, but I do, I thank you for the opportunity to speak. And again, I just want to underscore how out of character this is. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Right, okay, I don't see any. So is there anyone else present who would like to speak on this item?
No, we don't have any further people who haven't already spoken.
Okay, so then this hearing is closed, thank you.
Our next item, last hearing item for today commissioners, Borough of Brooklyn, calendar numbers 28 and 29. CD 15, calendar number 28, C210239ZMK. Calendar number 29, N210240ZRK. A public hearing in a matter of applications for zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning 2134 Coyle Street rezoning.
Thank you. This looks like this will not be a team presentation, but you can proceed.
Hi, good afternoon. Madam Chair, Commissioners, Neil Wispert, on behalf of Coil Properties LLC, who owns the property at 2134 Coyle Street, who proposes to rezone the area from a R4C1-2 to an R6AC2-4 commercial district within a mandatory inclusionary housing designated area. Next, the site is located on the, the rezoning area is located on the west side of Coyle Street between Avenue U and Avenue V. Next, the development site is Lot 11. Next, here's a photograph of the, the area in red will be the development site. The area in yellow is part of the rezoning, but is not part of the proposed development. Next, please. Next, please. Here is the existing zoning map, you can see it is located within an R4 and a C1-2. The proposal is to rezone the area to an R6A and a C2-4. Next, please. Here is the rendering of the building. We met with the community board, community board 15 numerous times. And we came to the understanding that the community board preferred a building of 55 feet in height. And that's what we're proposing, we're also providing a 35 foot rear yard, and a parking entrance on Coil Street to the north of the property. The building will be constructed over the existing Dollar Tree. Next, please. Here is a section of the building. As you can see, the cars will enter on Coil Street, and there will be parking on two sub seller levels, sub grade levels. Next, please. There will be 195 spaces, this was based on the community board wanting a space for every unit. Originally, we had provided 148 units in the building, and 47 units will be reserved for the commercial uses on the site. And as Commissioner RT said, I spoke to the architect, we will provide ample bicycle parking as well, that will not be a problem. Next, please. The proposed building will contain 126,116 square feet, with a total residential floor area of 94,774 square feet. Next, please. Here's a rendering, as you can see, the Dollar Tree will remain, and was constructed to support the additional load of the building. The other two existing warehouses will be demolished, and the building will occupy the 350 foot frontage of the project site. Next, please. This is just a chart showing the differences between the R4 and the R6A. Next, please. The 55 foot high building, five story building, will be in context with the surrounding area. There are numerous six and seven buildings located to the south, nature buildings. Next, please. This will be the breakdown of affordable, most likely with a 30% requirement, which will be 36 affordable units and 119 total. And that is it. I would like to mention that community board 15 approved this application 28 to 6, as the Borough President.
Thank you very much. Are there questions from the commission? Commissioner Dweck?
Thank you, you got cut off as you were mentioning the Borough President. If you can continue what you were saying, and additionally, you can speak to the Borough President's recommendations in his report, specifically amongst them, the 55 foot, that we asked of the 55 foot height, if it gets approved.
Yes, so the Borough President offered a favorable recommendation. I know the Borough President is looking for some memorialization that the 55 foot height building will be developed. I don't know if there's any binding agreement we can enter into, but the owners of Burkhoff Supply, who own this site, have been in the neighborhood for over 20 years. They know the neighborhood, and what we've presented over and over, and worked with the community board, was a 55 foot high building, and the intent is to proceed with that, and still stay true to what has been presented to the community board and the Borough President. We've also explained to Borough President that we'll be happy to work with the Borough President to find a local affordable housing sponsor, as well as use minority and women owned businesses for the construction as well. And also find a pool of potential affordable unit owners within the local community board.
Can you touch on the bedroom mix again?
Can I go back to the presentation? It was the last page I was on.
We can get that back up, there we go.
So this was prepared for the Borough President. The plan is probably to meet the 30% requirement, the 80% AMI, which would be four studios, three one bedrooms, and primarily two and three bedrooms, 16 and 13 respectively. Under this count, there will be 36 affordable units, with 119 total units in the building. We originally looked at worst case scenario when we met with the community board. And so, we provided 195 parking spaces, based on 148 units, and 47 for the commercial uses. Regardless of the number of unit count, we will make sure we provide one space for each residential unit, as well as the 47 units for the commercial spaces.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions for Mr. Weisbart? Okay, well, I don't have any other speakers signed up. But if there are any other individuals present who would like to speak, now is the time to do so.
There are no further speakers on the side.
Okay, then this hearing is closed, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Okay, so Mr. Secretary, is there any other business before the commission today?
Chair Laramont, there is no other business before the commission, but I do have a brief announcement to make to our audience, if I may. For those of you who were unable to, or did not wish to testify, you can submit written testimony online by selecting this hearing on the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage portal through DCP webpage, or by mailing your comment to City Planning Commission, Calendar Information Office, 120 Broadway, 31st Floor, New York, New York, 10271.
Thank you. I can now say that this meeting is adjourned, and thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful day.